All right, I'll call this meeting to order June twenty ninth at seven P M. We're in the Oak Ridge City Hall Council Chambers. First order business is pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under common, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Folks. Jackie, can you call the roll, please?
Yes, Counselor Coker.
Here.
Counselor Bjarnson.
Here.
Counselor Charman.
Here.
Counselor Hooker.
Here.
Mayor Ketchum.
Here.
Counselor Kenyon.
Here.
Counselor Hollitt.
Here.
Okay.
Thank you. Next is item four, which is additions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda. Does any counselor have a addition, correction, or adjustment? Nothing heard, and I have none. James, anything?
No.
Okay, great. Next is public comment. The first thing I do is there was a letter that was submitted, and we neglected to read it last session, so I'm going to read it now. This was from a group of concerned citizens and submitted by Ms. Kingsbury. And so I'll read this. It's entitled Concerned Citizens of Oak Ridge, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and it's through the city of Oak Ridge, Oregon. "We, the undersigned citizens of Oak Ridge, are concerned of a perceived increase of property crimes within our area and of how these property crimes are currently being addressed by the Lane County District Attorney." The following quotes are taken from an article by Chris M. Letman, a reporter of K L C C dated July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. "We welcome all those interested to read in full this article entitled, 'Lane County DA's Office Won't Prosecute Certain Crimes Due to Staffing Shortage.' There are additional reports from a number of other news outlets in line with Mr. Letman's order." "Lane County District Attorney Patty Perlow has stated, due to a shortage of prosecutors in her office, nonviolent offenders of property crime will not be charged. For now, her attorneys won't prosecute certain crimes, including disorderly conduct, driving while suspended, and property crimes. There may be remains some exceptions to the state of policy, however, we suggest when the district attorney's office publicly puts out such a statement, it is counterproductive. When a nonviolent offender of a property crime is not caught or not prosecuted when required, it is understandable that a person may be motivated to continue stealing personal property, including including break-ins and a chance of becoming a violent offender in the future. We appreciate our local police department continues to investigate all reported property crimes. Again, what the district attorney reported to have said, 'I would anticipate that it would take about a year to get the entry-level lawyers up to speed to be able to handle the volume of cases that we would want them to and to continue to promote them into handling a felony caseload,' he said. Assuming I don't lose any more lawyers, I'm able to fill the two vacancies that I still have, I would say it's probably going to be a couple of years before to capacity. It will be others in the end who evaluate the validity of the district attorneys above reason for this policy of not investigating or prosecuting nonviolent property crime, either be it lack of competency of her office or a situation that she has no ability to help solve. Yet, in the in the immediate future, we, the undersigned, request the city of Oak Ridge to do all it can to further address concerns relating to property crime. To just a couple of years maybe is not a reasonable timeframe regarding a better outcome of this issue. An organized citywide promotion of local watch groups with the help and close participation of our city police department might be considered. Another suggestion would be a publicly stated policy that our police department continues to investigate and arrest anyone who breaks the law, regardless if it ends up dismissed as a no-file within the office of the Lane County District Attorney. Regards, the undersigned, and it's signed by approximately forty citizens of Oak Ridge." With that, are there any on the Zoom platform, are there any comments? Public comment? In the room? All right, nothing heard. Next is mayor comments, announcements, and proclamations. Only one thing, I want to remind everybody that July fourteenth is wildfire safety night being held at Green Waters Park and in the community building. It'll be attended by many of our partners, including the Forest Service, Oregon Department of Forestry, Lane County Emergency Management, the city professionals, as well as others. So I encourage you to come out, and best of all, there's free food, hot dogs, watermelon. July fourteenth, five to seven P M. There'll be some informational stuff inside the community building and displays, and then they'll have the presentation where there'll be some folks speaking, particularly from Oak Ridge Air, who's kind of the manager of it all. And again, five to seven on the fourteenth of July, so encourage you to come on out. Next, we're down to council comments and announcements. Does any counselor have a comment or announcement to make? Counselor Hollitt, when's the Fourth of July? Can you announce something about that so we know?
Yeah, the Oak Ridge Independence Day Fourth of July Festival is at Green Waters Park. Everything is scheduled to go on. We have live bands, lots of things for family activities, lots of things for kids, food trucks, a whole array of wholesome family fun.
Thanks very much. What time's it get started?
Starts at eleven A M. It ends after the fireworks show. The fireworks will start at dusk.
Great, thank you. Any other counsel remarks or comments? Okay, nothing heard, we'll move on. We're down, all the way down to item nine, ordinances and resolutions with public comment. The nine point one is resolution fourteen dash two thousand and twenty-three, schedule of fees beginning fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four through two thousand and twenty-four. First reading. James, you want to introduce this topic?
Thank you, Mayor. All right, as counsel, remember, we brought this to city council at our last meeting, requested that we postpone until this meeting. So to recap, we had input from the administrative administration committee of public works, fire and police chiefs, and we also looked at other cities, including the President of Florence and Eugene, and came up with a new schedule of fees. Provided the proposal, whose schedule and our current schedule as well. Mr. Zilstra also provided some cell sheets that are in the council packet. So that is what's for council today at first readings.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion. I move we approve the recommended changes of the city's schedule by approving the first reading of resolution fourteen dash two thousand and twenty-three.
You're second?
Second.
Counselor Coker, okay? All right, motion made by Counselor Charman, second by Counselor Coker, discussion from counsel. Or questions of staff?
I have a question. So I haven't refreshed myself since last meeting. But so like if there is a property with this overgrown and somebody buys it and then they immediately, you know, get something saying, hey, you need to clean up your property. Is there any kind of like D way in that as far as the time they have, or did it have? How does that work exactly? Or do they just immediately start appearing costs?
Well, it depends. So if they if they had been cited, then they'd have to appear in front of municipal court to address that. If it was a previous owner that was cited, the new owners would still be responsible for cleaning it up, but they even have to go to municipal court because that's whoever cited. That's the show up. I can't even tell you that in my experience, the judges did pretty lenient, but working with people, giving them some time. But of course, the police department also gives a warning first, usually for high grass, stuff like that, but give them two weeks, and if it's not done, that outside. That answers your question.
I was just curiously how strict that was.
We do everything we can to work with. Yes, because what we really want is the cracks and the cuts.
Yeah. Property cleanup, whatever. Because I recall when I was living in Portland, they would have fixing things like that, but it would come when they have this much time to do it. Here's the bill. If you don't do it, we will fix it.
We do that, same thing, except for the last part. Yes. We don't have the staff.
Yeah.
Any other questions from counselors online? Okay. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Hooker.
Aye.
Counselor Bjarnson.
Aye.
Counselor Charman.
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum.
Aye.
Counselor Coker.
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt.
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Jackie. James, do you want to read the order of resolution, please?
Yes. Resolution fourteen dash two zero two-three, a resolution repealing and replacing resolution zero eight dash two zero two-one and establishing a new fee schedule for city services, permits, and applications. Whereas the city of Oak Ridge City Council desires to repeal and replace resolution zero eight dash two zero two-one and the associated fee schedule for city services, permits, applications, and other fees, and replace it with the attached new fee schedule effective July first, two thousand and twenty-three. And whereas the city of Oak Ridge presently charges for variety of services, permits, and applications and other fee, and whereas the city council agrees that administration of the various charges would be greatly simplified if all such charges would be consolidated into one resolution where both city staff and citizens of the city of Oak Ridge could determine any of the fees charged by city. Therefore, be it resolved by the city council and city of Oak Ridge, Oregon, that the fee set forth in the attached exhibit shall be charged the appropriate service permit and/or application fees effective July first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thanks, James. Might there be a second motion that someone wants to make, the counselor wants to make?
I'll make a motion. I move we adopt the recommended changes of the fee schedule by approving the second reading of resolution fourteen dash two thousand and twenty-three by title.
I'll second.
Motion made by Counselor Charman, second by Counselor Hooker. Discussion on this one, the second reading by title only. Okay, Jackie. Call for a vote, please.
Yes. Counselor Bjarnson.
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum.
Aye.
Counselor Coker.
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon.
Aye.
Counselor Charman.
Aye.
Counselor Hooker.
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. I actually neglected to offer a public comment for this. So, Mr. Scott, did you have a comment?
I just wondered, again, it's just the character of the changes this year, how much it will affect the city.
It would definitely go up because most of the fees, as usual. There's a few that are going down, the Bass and Jordan will be moving up, so. Exact numbers, it's really hard to tell. There are some services, especially in the planning department, are charged for in the tax, even though most cities do, so we do expect it to be considerable and measurable.
Remember, sort of word comparison shopping, I've heard. Someone hires a little hard for me to go to an average.
Correct, yeah. We're in my estimation, we're average for the city of ours, we're below average compared to some large city.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to nine point two, that's resolution eleven dash two thousand and twenty-three, adoption of the approved fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four budget, second reading, and I'll ask if there are any conflicts that have to be declared.
Did I miss it being read by title only?
Thank you, Jackie. Yes.
Okay.
In the head of myself. James?
Yes, all right. Resolution fourteen dash two zero two-three, a resolution repealing and replacing resolution zero eight dash two zero two-one and establishing a new fee schedule for city services, permits, and applications.
Thank you, James. Back to nine point two, I see Counselor Hollitt has a hand up.
Thank you. I just wanted to declare my conflict to the next item on the agenda. My spouse works for the city of Oak Ridge, and I have an actual conflict of interest and will not be voting or taking in the discussion of the budget.
Thank you. Any other counselor, Bjarnson?
Yeah, I need to declare a potential conflict of interest. I am on the volunteer roster at the fire department.
Thank you. Any others? Okay. James, you want to introduce this?
Sure. All right, so at the last council meeting, we approved the first reading of the new fiscal year budget. This is the second reading. Of course, we did. We did make the one correction. As you notice, we've done calculations. We corrected on one page, which then affected first two pages. That has been fixed. But the numbers in the budget published to the public on the L P one form were the correct numbers. Those have not changed. So publication notice is still valid. The computation errors in the worksheets of the budget, so. Same numbers that we've been looking at. Just need to ask this question.
Thanks, James. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that we approve or adopt resolution eleven dash two thousand and twenty-three, adopting the approved fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four budget in the amount of eleven million six hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and making the associated appropriations and imposing and categorizing taxes after a second reading by title only.
Thank you. You're second. Okay. Motion made by Counselor Hooker, second by Counselor Charman. Discussion on the second reading of the budget or questions of staff?
I have a question.
Counselor Kenyon, yes, go ahead.
Are we allowed to read the second version by title only when it didn't pass unanimously at the first reading?
I would say yes, because we are at the second reading, and you have the council has the ability to, since we've two separate dates, we have the ability to read it by title a second time. Would you agree?
Yes. Yeah, you want to say so?
If it was the same day, it would be a different story, but. Yeah. Any other questions on the budget from counselors? Okay. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Coker.
Aye.
Counselor Charman.
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum.
Aye.
Counselor Hooker.
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt.
Abstain.
Oh, shit, sorry. Counselor Kenyon. Counselor Bjarnson.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Any public comment on this, either on the Zoom or in the room? Resolution eleven twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-three. Okay, nothing heard. James, do you want to read by title only?
Resolution number eleven dash two zero two-three, resolution adopting the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four budget.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I, may I do something?
Please.
I believe that the public comment should be done before the vote, if we can do that in the future.
Yeah, that was my mistake. Try to get it right next time.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to nine point three, which is ordinance nine forty, fireworks prohibition during extreme fire danger, second reading, James?
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so at the last council meeting, we passed the first reading of this ordinance, which prohibits use of fireworks during extremely fire danger, with the exception of professional fireworks shows approved by the Florence State Fire Marshal and event approved by city council.
Okay, I hear a motion. Going once.
Mayor, I move to approve the second reading of this ordinance, but I don't have the title number in front of me.
Ordinance nine forty.
Ordinance nine forty.
Okay. I hear a second?
Second.
Is that Counselor Bjarnson or Coker?
That is Coker.
Thank you. Okay, motion made by Counselor Kenyon, seconded by Counselor Coker. Any discussion on ordinance nine forty? Why don't we do public comment first? Don't forget, any public comment on the fireworks prohibition and extreme fire danger on the Zoom or in the room? Mr. Scott?
I think it's going to be hard to control personal fireworks if they see fireworks going on and displayed during extreme weather. Most of those types of folks won't be listening to the radio or not seeing the, you know, some of the basic fireworks that they're doing. I mean, it's okay to fire off fireworks, as you were saying. Clearly, down to the standard, not that it's not justified, I think, for professionals, and you just find that I am concerned that that's above the standard, that it won't be understood.
Understood, thank you. Anyone on the Zoom platform, any comments, public comment on the fireworks ordinance? Counselor Hollitt?
Yeah, I apologize, my computer's malfunctioning, so I can't put my camera up, but I do want to say something to those people concerned about professional fireworks. I do believe that having a professional fireworks show with professional pyrotechnics, especially our crew, that have been doing this for much more over a decade, with dozens of skilled firefighters from structural and urban to forestry and grass is the most effective and strategic way to approach this, to provide a safe Fourth of July for the community. Oak Ridge has proved that a fire show will happen in one way or another. That is not a threat, it's an observation of what I've experienced right here in this community. In two thousand and twenty, the city council banned fireworks, and we experienced large fireworks shows all over the city, as well as in our forests. We did not have the law enforcement or manpower to enforce that, and we still don't. Not even close, no one really does. I really respect and appreciate what the city of Bend has implemented, and I wanted to read it again to the public. The city of Bend City Council finds that prohibiting the use and sale of fireworks has benefits to the community, including through less risk of fire in an increasingly dry environment and less disruptions to humans and animals. The council also finds that allowing for permitted public displays can serve to recognize and continue the traditions associated with fireworks, especially around the holidays such as the Fourth of July. The council finds that, on balance, this approach is the best way to reconcile both the current concerns and the historical traditions found around fireworks. With this, it does not mean that I believe there's no way that a professional show would ever be canceled, such as if there were a predicted east wind. I think that fire officials would, I'm sure, take that into great considerations, and I believe a show would not go on if something that of that magnitude. That's just one example. But I do believe with a collaborative and coordinated effort, we can provide a safe and effective show. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Please, Counselor Hooker.
Chrissy, or Counselor Hollitt. Is there a difference between professional fireworks and personal fireworks? And what is that different if or difference if there is?
Yes, there definitely is. Professional fireworks require pyrotechnics, certification, and training. That is the type of fireworks that you buy from a distributor such as Tannerite. Personal fireworks are the ones that you buy at the grocery store alongside the road in the event tents. Does that answer your question?
Yes, but my understanding was that there is a difference on the dissipation of that of the two. Is that correct? They're made differently, so they don't something that has to do, and I can't remember exactly how it was worded.
Yes, but I would not say I'm qualified to answer those questions, but yes, there is truth to that. Usually, they dissipate in the air at a higher altitude, but like I said, that's that's not my lane, so I want to be careful.
Right, okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this?
Just like state, I'm still opposed to it. I think we should just set a standard for the community in saying that we ban fireworks at at a extreme fire danger level. I don't think we should be able to debate that at the moment of the day.
Yeah. Um, I think that the most effective way to prevent fire is to not do the fireworks. That is the ultimate way, no matter how many firefighters you have. The idea would be you don't start it in the first place, so, and the way to do that is to not give an exemption to professional organizations because I have seen professional shows go awry. And a lot of it's not to do with their professionalism, it's to do with the pyrotechnics, or it's to do with the staging. So I am not in favor of exempting professional shows in our most extreme fire danger, which is it's pretty different. It's difficult to get there, and you're you're in a tinderbox if you read the description of extreme fire danger, so. That's my opinion, but any other?
One other question. Am I under the understanding that if this doesn't pass, that there is no way for us to actually enforce, there's no ordinance to enforce private as well?
That's correct, unless if this, if the state would mandate something, but that's not anticipated.
But at this point, there is no way for our police department, they would be wasting their time, basically, to go out and tell people they can't do it. Personal people, because there's, I mean, they could tell them, but they couldn't cite them, educate, whatever you want to call it.
We still cite for illegal fireworks areas, fireworks.
Right.
But correct.
But not regular fireworks. Okay. I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Any other comment before we go to the vote? Counselor Bjarnson, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to state and be clear that this ordinance is only in effect in the event of extreme fire danger, and that's for including personal fireworks, correct?
Correct.
So unless we go into extreme fire danger, there is no no ban on any kind of fireworks at all, correct?
Only the illegal ones.
Well, yes, of course. Okay, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Counselor Hooker?
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon?
Hi.
Mayor Ketchum?
No.
Counselor Hollitt?
Hi.
Counselor Bjarnson?
Hi.
Counselor Tarmann?
No.
All right, motion passes. James, can you read by title only, please?
Yes. Ordinance number nine four zero, in ordinance amending City of Oak Ridge Code, Chapter one, read zero, without the fireworks ban and other restrictions, during declared fire season, extreme fire danger conditions.
Thank you. All right. Now to item ten, public comment. Any public comment on the Zoom platform? In the room, any public comment in the room? All right, nothing heard. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I so state.
Be adjourned at seven thirty-one. Thank you, everybody.